Good evening, everybody. I would like to welcome you to the first budget analysis meeting of the year. And Chris Anisikovich cannot be here tonight, but the meeting will follow the setup that Carl has given us with the budget pages that we have in front of us. If you have any questions, this is as good a time as any to ask them. Lead on, McDuff.
Okay. So, like we've done in the past, I'll march you through the budgets and let's talk about what's in it. And if there's any areas I'm looking for feedback on, I'll certainly flag that for you, or if there's reductions from changes in assumptions. And for your sheets for tonight, senior services, we need to move to the 28th instead of tonight so that we can have our senior coordinator here outside of any COVID restrictions that she's currently working through. So that's one less for tonight to go through. So, starting with the town manager's budget, salary line item is my salary as agreed to by the council, Mary's salary, receptionist, and then the compensation that's provided to the council by charter. Auto allowance is in there per the employment agreement between the town and myself. Repairs and maintenance, that's up. We have to replace our postage machine in that fiscal year, so I have to reflect the added cost for what the current lease rate is for a new postage machine with Pitney bows. General supplies, I took that down a little bit based on our historical spending. And then miscellaneous expenditures, that's been suppressed for a few years now because I have not paid for enrollment in the International City Management Association. They were working through a change in their dues structure, which would reduce the cost of membership. That has now gone into effect, so that dollar amount would then now start to be spent more Any questions on the town manager's budget? If not, that takes us to finance. So, full-time salary line item is covering the cost of the finance staff. The elected official salary is the $1,000 that's provided to our treasurer. That is still a position under the charter, as was raised during the charter revision public hearing of did we still have a treasurer? Then the rest of it is pretty straightforward with some allocation of travel expense for trips to the bank. Other professional services, IT technology, so that's our cost for the accounting system that the town relies on. Postage is paying for postage and providing such to other departments. This is when stamps are required versus the postage machine. General supplies, it is what it is. And then dues and fees is Sue's membership and GFOA and other professional associations.
I'm sorry, what did you say other professional services was?
Sue, you want?
Those are the filing fees you have to pay to use debt as an arrebat to the final payment.
Wait a minute, I'm sorry, could you say that again? Filing fees for?
Our debt issuances have to be filed publicly and they have the service to provide for us.
Okay.
The town at one point did not make the requisite filings, which became an issue, so it's a service that's now paid for.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on to town clerk. So, full-time salaries is to pay for the two positions that round out the town clerk's Small amount for travel expense, this would be for traveling for conferences associated with professional development for the town clerk. Other professional technical services is for COT, which is the service that maintains what's filed on the land records, as well as supplies for vital statistics. General supplies is office supplies and postage. This is up over historical levels primarily because of absentee ballots being more popular as a way to vote coming out of COVID. Technology software for $1,000 is the archival map program that is in the clerk's office, putting maps on MyLars and the like. Election costs are in at my level at $7,500 instead of the $900 that was requested. So, some of this was anticipating a high need for absentee balloting and seeing where things were going. I looked at it more on where we were spending based on absentee ballots in the last two elections for right sizing that dollar amount. So, that's why there is a reduction at my level from what was requested by the town Program costs, that's the dog licensing program. And then other items at $3,000, that's the code book update. So, some of it is just a maintenance expense associated with having the code and being available online. There's another chunk of it, which is associated with new ordinances that may be passed by the council. So, we try and wait till we've got a block of ordinances in order to update the book and not update it with onesie twosies. And it's anticipated that we would have some kind of update cost for the charter, assuming that it passes in November of this particular fiscal year. So, if that comes to pass, that needs to be codified into the book also. Any questions on town clerk?
Sharon?
Just a couple of actions to point out on the election line. We have a covenant to find there in April next year to be discussed. I mean, we say that the union portal and the other access that may be in the election and public. Now, they have access to them online through the driver's license. And last year, they enacted that a couple of weeks before the election, so we didn't have a big participation, but it came up during that fourth presidential election. It's back to the next part of the primary, if we can leave this slide there.
So, are you, so you are disputing the reduction in the amount that you requested? Is that where you're going?
Well, that's why I kept it at $9,000. You know, we know it's a mandatory year for no participation in that.
Okay.
So, I won't have, probably have enough money for the April, I'm just, I'm not sure.
Okay, all right.
It's more online access than it might be.
All right.
And part of the reasoning why I cut it was that the full dollar amount in that line item had not been expended for election expenses. So, the actual spend rate in the department does not, did not support $9,000. Supported a reduction, and then I did not take the full reduction it could have anticipating what Sharon just referenced.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, tax assessor?
Tax assessor is next. So, full-time salary is for the three employees that service the department. Travel expense would be trips to court associated with any assessment appeals and the like. In-service is professional training and maintaining certifications for the employees. So, these programs are turning back to being in person instead of online now that we've moved beyond, or further beyond COVID, so that that expense is anticipated to be fully expended at the dollar amount that's higher. Other professional technical services is for the map program to update the maps used by the assessor in the event of lot splits and the like. $10,000 under other professional services is associated with the cost for audits. This would be personal property audits that businesses go through. Technical services, where it says quality, is quality data. That's the firm that the town uses that impacts both the assessor and the tax office. So, this would be creating the billings, property tax billings going off to tax collection. Next line item, IT technology maintenance. And then in brackets, it says vision. Vision is the Kama software that maintains the assessor's database, available online for review. But that's, field cards are no longer pieces of paper, you use the Kama software. Postage, there's a postage expense with departments sending out notices to individuals who are eligible for tax relief programs and the like. Periodicals, there's a reduction there because we're seeing some efficiency by having a shared LexisNexis account between assessors and tax. We were maintaining two separate accounts based on an increase that's coming through from a provider. We've determined that it made more sense just to have a single account for the town, but that the two departments can go in with their own individual logins. So, that does provide a reduction under periodicals. The rest of the expense is the cost associated for the necessary books and the like, which go into helping value motor vehicles and other items. And then $1,000 for dues and fees, this would be the ongoing professional development and professional associations for the assessor's office. Any questions on assessor?
Did you say the expense on periodicals is?
Yeah, that's what I was just mentioning about LexisNexis. It's an online system that folks go into. It's used for different purposes between the two departments, but LexisNexis was giving us a large increase for the upcoming year, and it made more sense to merge the tax and assessor into one. So, you'll see it when we get to the next page, which is tax collector. The cost for LexisNexis is born in that budget.
Okay, Carl, I have a question that probably, probably talked about it earlier, but, okay, so looking at the salary summaries, the SUA is for supervisor union, right?
Yep.
And the CLs are for clerical union?
Yep.
Okay, so only one of the, I mean, these two show an increase in their salaries. But I'm looking back at the town clerk, and the assistant clerk who was in the clerical union there does not have a salary increase listed with their name.
The only salary increases that are in here are if there is a step increase.
Oh, the step increase, you did tell me that.
So, the clerical union, you move up a step.
Right.
Based on years of service.
So, this has nothing to do with any potential salary settlements, increases in the clerical wages that is up for review this year? This is just a step increase?
It's only if there's an agreed upon salary increase by either separate employment agreement, if it's a non-bargaining uniperson, or if there's a step increase called for, for that person based on, in this case, years of service.
Got it, thank you.
So, it will not be universal across every department, it will be unique to.
Right, just when they achieve that step.
Correct. It's unique to the employees' time and work for the town.
Been there, had that, thank you. Just forgot.
Okay, tax collector, so full-time and part-time is funding for the staff that work for the department. Travel expense is mileage reimbursement for trips to the bank. We bank with Bank of America, which has closed its branch in Clinton, so we have to drive a little further afield to actually go to a real bank that will take our cash deposits. So, a lot of the additional expenses are tied to quality data and the generation of tax bills. So, when we start moving down through those next few line items, other professional technical services, that's paying for quality data to prepare the bills. The $17,000 under postage is a payment to quality data. There is going to be, there is anticipated to be a postage increase coming through from the postal service. So, that's baked into what quality data passes along to us. Under other, for the printing at $4,500, that again is quality data printing for us. So, a lot of those additional expenses are tied up with our vendor. DMV fees is what we pay to the state to get, be able to send tax delinquents to the DMV, which is why you can't register a vehicle if you're tax delinquent, and you have to get a clearance at the local level that you paid it. So, that's been a longstanding agreement with DMV and municipalities. And then, under other items, you see it says LexisNexis. This now reflects the increase in the subscription to that service, and it is now used by both assessors and tax. So, this is, this is the other half of what was taken out of the assessor's budget. Any questions on tax? Okay, then that takes us to inland wetlands next. So, you've got, under the full-time salary, it's a pro-rata piece of the zoning enforcement officer, so it's part of her wage, and then the full wage of a clerical employee who supports the inland wetlands function. The rest of the departmental expense is small. So, the travel expense is, the hope is that we would actually have commissioners participating in some of the training instead of just staff for their continuing education and being able to serve as an inland wetlands official. So, travel expense would be aimed in that direction, training would be aimed in that direction with the hope that they would avail themselves of that opportunity. Then, other professional technical services is an earmark with the anticipation that we might need the town engineer to provide some plan review fees for us that would not be picked up by the applicant. So, that's something we've used, and it sort of depends on what the applications are coming in in that given year. So, it's kind of a placeholder. Postage is sending out necessary notices. General supplies is sort of just that, it's picking up any kind of office supply and the like going forward. Not a lot here. If there's no questions on inland wetlands, zoning board of appeals, so sort of a similar story here. There is no salary line item associated with this, it's just sort of some additional expense. So, we're looking at making sure that members of the ZBA have the opportunity to receive some training. There was a mandate passed that we spoke about last budget regarding required training for land use boards, aimed at planning and zoning, but there would be a value to having ZBA folks also trained. We had the town attorney provide them with some free training this past year to reorient them on what their job is and the sort of the standard they need to hold to. So, we would hope to be able to get them into additional trainings to support their skill set in evaluating applications that come in from folks. So, that's kind of the driver on that one compared to the year prior. If there's no questions on ZBA, we move to planning and zoning. So, here, the full-time salary line item reflects the full cost for having the town planner. So, there's a jump there over the history based, and we knew that and understood that going into the budget when we adopted this last year. The other half of the CEO's salary is in here as well as the clerk that supports planning and zoning. A lot of it is smallish items, again, that theme of training. There is a mandate that P&amp;Z folks have to have training, so we have increased the dollar amount there anticipating that they will participate in new training opportunities. The larger expense that's new here would be $27,500 under other professional technical services, and this is aimed at actually trying to get some return on investment under what we've already spent to have GIS. So, we have GIS as a function, it's available through the town's website, it's a little bit of an electronic filing cabinet at this point. Now that we have a planner who is here, working five days a week, this is to give her access to some of the tools she needs to be able to actually do analysis and work through what GIS can actually do for us rather than just existing. We spent money and plowed money into it to create it, to establish it, and to maintain what we have, but we're not nearly getting enough bang out of the buck, bang for the buck out of it, and now we have somebody here who can maximize what we get out of it. So, we've, we're a little aggressive in what we're looking for here, but this would give us internal capacity to be able to do GIS work rather than just hosting maps.
So, is this going to add more layers of information or just more of a deep dive into the information that's there?
It's a little bit of actually being able to do some analysis, and I think Abby can speak to that.
Sure, so it's both really. So, some of it is, at least in the 2005 that's in here, is budget to help correct some of the pieces that you see on the floor now. So, we have things like a condo parcel that may have a null value for a whole piece of property, an individual that knows where it could reach the condominium, things like locating those on the appropriate places, creating layers so that folks understand who owns, who is in common or otherwise the land underneath, so that kind of helps people coming and asking questions on who uses the property to build a public. So, that kind of thing, updating and digitizing wetlands lines, again, trying to give the best information possible to the public if they're doing their local development committees coming from the office. So, that's part of it. The other piece is to help us, as Carl mentioned, with some of the more analytical pieces. As we get into some of the cultural resiliency planning, you know, we're looking at trying to figure out if there are zoning amendments that need to be made, what are the effects of zoning changes? So, we're saying, hey, in these particular districts, we think that sure that there should be a five-foot setback instead of a 10-foot setback. We can do an analysis and say, well, how many folks will be more conforming or less conforming? What's the impact on our residents if they make these policy decisions? So, that's the kind of thing, you know, sort of distances in terms of how far people are walking between amenities, and creating some analysis to support the P S U D that's upcoming. And again, just some of the general tools as projects come in, we can try to do that. So, some of those layers that may get created out of projects, you know, can certainly be shown. So, updates to open space, those kinds of things, you know, if there were targeted properties for evaluation or partnership with Land Trust or other places, we can show folks where those are and be able to work on that parent and work we do. So, there's a lot of community for us. Right now, I think there's sort of a cleanup element to it that needs to happen, and then we begin generating additional data for folks to use.
Wow, that sounds great. That sounds like a good investment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is building department. So, full-time salaries is to pay for the building official and his clerk. Beyond that, there's not a lot of other expense here, it's relatively small items. So, it's dues and fees for the appropriate professional association for the building official. There's an inspection coverage, which is a placeholder if we need to have support when the building official is on vacation, or we need specialized plan reviews. So, those are dollar amounts that have fluctuated, and it really depends on what's going on in town at any one point in time. There was a reduction under training and code books. We did put money in the budget with the anticipation that there was going to be something going on with the state with code updates. I think we're through the woods on code updates, which is why I cut it back. Richard is in a good spot with where what we have for books. We're not anticipating anything else coming out of the state in the short run. So, that's, that's the only reduction that's there between what was requested and what There's no questions on building? Next up is human services. So, this is full-time salaries, full-time and part-time salaries reflect the employees that work for human services that are not covered under the grants that the department gets. So, there are a number of folks that are paid directly by grant, they are not paid for by tax dollars. This is the balance that is paid for by, by tax dollar funding. So, some, some, some of the dollars that are in here, you've got under travel expense is anything associated with either a professional development opportunity, or when we were doing pre-COVID, there was some mileage back and forth to the schools for services that were being provided to students. Some of the other expenses are minor in nature. The next big ticket item is down at the bottom of other items under resident emergency. So, in the past, it was at a $5,000 mark. Last year, we took it up to $10,000 in anticipation that there was going to be higher public demand for the town providing additional support to individuals in need. So, we've seen folks coming in leveraging the dollars that were already set aside by ARPA, but we're also leveraging programs that have been longstanding in order to help meet individual needs for folks that are dealing with their own personal problems and the ability to pay bills as necessary. So, the intent here is to maintain that level of funding at $10,000 going forward to provide the needs of individuals at some point of financial crisis in their personal lives.
You mentioned ARPA in there, how would this work?
It's in addition to.
In addition to.
So, when somebody comes in in need, they're vetted, and we go through what eligibility is, and then a decision is made on what's the, what's the most appropriate pot to dip into to help them. So, ARPA, we were trying to focus more on rental subsidy, mortgage subsidy. There are some longstanding utility expenses that go in the ARPA bucket because it's a little bigger than other personal expenses go against some of our other pre-existing programs where the dollar amount is a little bit smaller.
So, that's where this $10,000 goes?
The $10,000 is beefing up our ability to respond to the growth, the growth of demand.
Okay, all right.
The other item in here that's kind of an oddball is program cost. That really isn't an expense tied to human services. For some reason historically, the cost for some of the Veterans Day, Memorial Day activities where we're buying flags and wreaths and things of that nature were put under human services. This continues that. It was in at $2,500, the actual spend is consistently under $2,500. So, you'll see that I took it down to $2,000 instead of leaving it at $2,500. And then, we've got some other expenses which are associated with sort of the clerical, clinical supervision that has to take place for the counseling services that we're providing. If there's no questions on human services, next up is WASAM maintenance, which is a concentration account that is meant to carry sort of just the personnel expense associated with this building and its maintenance. So, it's, you're dealing with the custodians and their salaries here more than anything. The actual cost for materials and supplies that are used in cleaning and maintaining the buildings is picked up under public works's budget, but WASAM is set up just to be a concentration account for custodial expense. There's no questions on? There's no questions on WASAM. That takes us to Public Works next. So the top part of it, so you've got full-time salaries reflects staffing at Public Works. So the lower half of your spreadsheet includes salaries of the individual positions. Again, as was noted under clerical union, even under Public Works' union, unless there's a step increase, the wages are assumed to be flat because that is how we build the budget So going into the actual operating expense, you've got expenses associated with general overtime. Overtime, that's tied to field maintenance. And then overtime that's associated with snow and ice removal. That's sort of looking at a historical trend of where, what we have spent for snow and ice removal, what are the storms and the like. So obviously, it varies. If we have a particularly harsh winter, unlike this year, it may be over expended. If we have a light year like we've had of late, it would be under expended. Unfortunately, storms don't take place Monday through Friday during the hours that Public Works is working, so we have to budget something. Travel expense is minor in nature. That's really if there's clerical back and forth between Public Works and this building and any other catchhalls. Clothing allowance is a contractual expense with the bargaining unit to provide them with sort of their uniform clothing. Snow plowing and sanding, that's a line item meant to carry the cost of salt and sand for cleanup during snow. Maybe Todd can answer. We've had kind of a light winter. If we spent money from what you've got in your balance to fill up the salt shed, does that provide an opportunity to pull the $48,000 down next year?
I'll let you know in a while. You know it's going to snow every week.
Yeah, I know. My kids want a day off from school because of snow, so that's why I'm asking. So that's something that maybe we discuss when we get into the council's further review of whether there's something there. Repair and maintenance permits, so this is some of the general expenses that Public Works carries as we're trying to maintain our facilities. Town hall building maintenance. Under the WASAM trust, we are supposed to maintain a certain documented expense tied to this building. So while we do spend far more than $15,000, we do maintain a line item to stay in keeping with our requirements under the trust that paid for construction of this building. Equipment maintenance, it is what it is. It's maintaining the fleet of equipment. Town building and facilities maintenance are costs associated with this building and other municipal buildings for what Public Works expends to maintain what we have for physical assets. Landfill cost, a good chunk of this is what we pay to truck waste to MIRA. So our waste goes, still goes to Essex. And unlike everything that went up to Hartford, instead of being trucked to or trained to the Western State or a Southern State, ours will still go from Essex to a burn plant and to be turned into energy. So we're in sort of a unique MIRA position that other towns are not in. The assumed tip fee that Todd used when he built his budget, MIRA's actual approved tip for the next year is a little lower, so a cut could be taken to the landfill line item of $3,340 based on a new tip fee of $116 a ton instead of $120 a ton.
Which line item was that again?
That's landfill cost. Just so you're aware, from a multi-year perspective, it's projected at 100, or it's been approved for $116 for the next fiscal year, the following fiscal year, the anticipated tip will come in at $131 a ton. So that's going to be a largish jump next year's budget.
Do we have to take it somewhere else?
No, that is just what the cost of operations is anticipating where the tip will shake out. And then the following year will be another jump. So by the time we're done with our five-year cycle with MIRA, and by the time it goes away, the cost to take away solid waste will be $140 plus a ton.
A ton, just nothing.
So the governor's bill relative to solid waste throws out a lot of stuff that the DPD is supposed to do and supposed to help with figuring out where solid waste is going to go. Whether that bends the cost curve is undetermined at this point. It assumes that MIRA is continuing to use some of its reserves to pay down the actual cost of the tip fee and to provide that recycling is taken at no cost. So they will continue to do that, but that pot is going to get smaller and smaller as they phase out over time. So that's partly why the tip fee will jump in the '24, '25 fiscal year. Other costs associated with diesel and gasoline, that's just our cost for the commodity. Safety management is costs for some of the safety equipment. Seems to be underspent, so I took a cut off of what Todd had proposed to what you see here in this budget going forward.
Going back to that diesel, gasoline, fuel. That almost seems too conservative. I mean, if the actual for '21, '22 was $170 and prices being what they are or have become and $165, $690, doesn't seem like, does that seem in line with?
It's in line with what our actual spend rate has been and where the commodity prices has been going. What you pay at the pump is now what we pay.
Right.
So now that the governor is phasing back in some of the gasoline tax, those costs are going, the price at the pump is going to go up faster than the price that we pay.
Okay.
So, and we're, we cut out some of that middleman expense because we're getting it at whatever the tank cargo is.
Maybe my question is, why was '21, '22 $170 when?
From the perspective of public.
That was the middle of COVID, or that was part of COVID. That seems, I mean, it went from 10, well, anyway, that's moot point. It's just interesting. Okay, all right.
If there's no questions for Public Works, the next up would be IT. So you've got the personnel expense associated with the two employees that support the town's IT activities. But IT in Clinton is kind of a mixed program. So we've got some support on the actual peripherals and software and the like that comes out of our staff. And then there's networking support that comes from our relationship with the Board of Ed and Omni Data. So that Board of Ed Omni Data piece is what you see under Professional Services that rounds out the balance of our IT program. Training is up. That's the cost associated with the ninji dojo stuff, which I'm sure you're all getting in your in-mail boxes. So you're a part of the reason why this is going up, so that you can participate in that. That's part of our cybersecurity requirement, which is helping control where cybersecurity insurance goes. So that awareness training, we're hoping, is penetrating and getting people to make good decisions when they get questionable emails coming in or any of the other topics that are covered. And I'm sure all of you on the council are doing the trainings just like all the employees are doing.
Of course we are.
I'm sure you are. I'm sure everyone is doing it. Other expenses, you got the infrastructure copier printer at the bottom. That's going up because we picked up maintenance contracts for plotters that are in land use and DPW. The other costs for the actual copier units that are used by the town are still locked into a lease. Communications is picking up the cost for Verizon account for cell phones and other data connections that are used by the town. Technology maintenance, this is our maintenance contracts for the different programs that are picked up by IT because it serves more than one department. If there's no questions on IT. Next up is PD. So if you look at the summary sheet, you'll have noted that Police Department has a slight decrease compared to the fiscal year we're in at present. Salary line item again reflects only if there's a step increase for an employee because their bargaining unit contract will be up for discussion. A lot of the other expenses sort of at the top of this budget are tied to the union contract. So you've got overtime expense. That is projected to decrease over the '22, '23. So that's where some of the savings is when you compare year to year. Longevity is a payment made for years of service. That's based on collective bargaining agreement. Holiday pay is what it costs to bring somebody in when somebody else is on some of the union holidays, so that's driven by the collective bargaining agreement. Other employee benefits under education is a benefit for continuing education that's tied to the collective bargaining agreement. Clothing allowance is another expense which we are required to pay under the union contract for everyone. So then we get into some of the other expenses. Training, this is ongoing investment in our people so that they get mandated training, which is required now under the Police Accountability Act, as well as training that is a positive for us. As you know from Dennis' reports, the department has been pursuing CLEA certification. CLEA is the gold standard of police certifications, so there is an ongoing training requirement to have the CLEA certification. CLEA is recognized by insurance carriers, so that does give us a little bit of an underwriting bump that provides us a benefit when they are underwriting law enforcement liability coverages that you wouldn't get if we were with Connecticut Post, which is the other Connecticut-based training program. Recruitment costs are expenses that we carry associated with trying to bring in new people to the department. We are looking at some retirements, which has also been noted in prior reports. So there is going to be an expense associated with trying to pull people in, hopefully as laterals rather than as new people coming in off of the street. Service contracts, there's a number of programs that the department is carrying expense for to maintain, which are important for the Detective Bureau and other programs within the department. Vehicle maintenance is the cost to stay on top of preventative maintenance for our vehicles. You'll see that that's, trajectory-wise, has been going down over time, and some of that is by the investments that have been made in the fleet by phasing out the older Dodge vehicles and with the replacement of the newer Ford interceptor vehicles and staying on top of them rather than driving them into the ground. Additional expenses in here under radio repair, general supplies is just a catchall for some of their expenses. There is a line item in here for what the department anticipates it would spend for gasoline, for its vehicles and the boat. Uniforms, as if there's some specific piece of clothing that's required for the department. Commission expense is service awards that the commission provides to support the rank and file, so the commission has a program to recognize individuals. K-9 program is the cost of food and veterinary bill for the canine dog. This is not the cost for the...
Therapy dog.
Therapy dog. Service dog. So that cost is not in here. That is off-budget. Armory is the expense associated with TASER replacements or ammunition. Ammunition has continued to be something that is expensive and hard to get. It's been, that's been the trend for a number of years now. Originally, it was marked off to people buying guns. It was also marked off to different wars around the world, so it continues to be a line item that grows over time. Prisoner cost is buying unhappy meals for people that we have to house overnight. And marine support would be costs associated with the police boat.
And what's the $302,000 for fiscal year '23 forecast under the marine support?
I'm going to guess that's a keying error.
Oh, it's good. Good, okay. Does that affect the bottom line? Oh, yeah, it must. I wonder why that was up $300,000.
That would have been a keystroke error when this is compiled.
That's good news.
If there's no questions on police.
This assumes full staff.
The salary line item, yes. We'll assume that it's full staffing. We're not slicing and dicing, thinking that there might be a month off or something like that. It's very difficult to predict that that would actually happen and how that would roll out. Communications is the cost associated with dispatch function. So again, salaries only go up if there's a step increase, as we're in negotiations with this group also. So it's, again, like the Police Department, some of these initial costs are tied to the collective bargaining agreement and what our staffing coverage requirements are under the collective bargaining agreement. So you've got your full-time and part-time salaries. Overtime, we've been trying to bend the cost curve there. You may recall, we took somebody from part-time and made them full-time to increase the number of full-timers in order to get more control over where overtime expense was going. The collective bargaining agreement includes some required staffing, and that required staffing model, in order to fulfill it, bakes in a certain amount of required overtime to bring people in in order to make sure that you have two dispatchers on the console. So over time, the chief has tried to pull that number down. We've adjusted some of our staffing to get to that level, but we also are fighting what's in the union contract that requires it. Holiday pay, again, because this is 24/7 operation, we do have to pay additional overtime to bring in folks to provide coverage when individuals are out due to holidays. Clothing allowance is the appearance of the dispatchers, and that's under the collective bargaining agreement. Training is up over the prior year. The hope here is to get some degree of professional certification for individuals that work here. There is a certification standard. If everyone is at the same level of certification, it helps get us to some level of commonality with neighboring municipalities. Service contracts, there's service contracts associated with our dispatch function. So that would be not just the physical equipment that we use for dispatching, but the software program that runs on the computers that provide computer-aided dispatch. Radio siren repair, this is if there's any miscellaneous repairs to any radio equipment and the like.
Why is that so abruptly up?
Our equipment is old and phasing out. That's part of the radio replacement project. So it will cost us money to fix and maintain stuff.
Okay, all right. All right, thank you.
If there's no questions on communications. Next up would be animal control. So again, you've got your R1 employee as the municipal animal control officer. We have phased out the part-time program, and the needs of the town are addressed fully by the full-time position. There's costs for any veterinary expense that we may have to incur associated with a dog that the department has to take in. So that is, it fluctuates depending on how many dogs we happen to pick up. Training is tapering downward for ongoing training for the animal control officer. And then our other line item for general supplies and uniforms are his tools and the professional appearance we're looking for. The bottom line, other regional dog facility, so we share our dog facility with some of our neighbors. In the past, they were making contributions. We were making contributions to a reserve set aside to maintain the facility. We stopped that a few years ago because the pot had grown to a large size. So we stopped budgeting for it. We told our partner municipalities they didn't need to keep paying us until we got to a point of needing to replenish. So not this year, but next year, we anticipate the need that it will have to replenish. So monies will be coming in from other towns, but we will have to budget something again under that line item because the pot has gotten to the point where we need to start recapitalizing it.
It should be a wash?
No, because we're putting in our piece. So two-thirds of the expense comes in from other towns, and then we have to put our piece in. But we haven't been in the past, so just so you're aware, there will start to be monies in that line item next budget year. Next up is fire marshal. The jump here is associated with the full-time salary line item. There have not been wage adjustments for the fire marshal or the deputy or the stipend that's paid to the burn official or the secretary for a number of years. So this is part of providing additional compensation for our part-timers for retention. That's sort of the biggest jump. That's $5,000, spread out over the four positions. Rest of the line items are essentially flat. So you've got a cost associated for training. We do not bear the full training expense here because our deputy is an official in another town, so some of his training is picked up by another municipality, but we have to pay for Jeff. General supplies is the needs of the department. Dues and fees are whatever professional associations he participates in. Other equipment has been used as a source of funds for tools that need replacement or upgrades. We've been buying lights and things of that nature which help with the investigation of crimes, of arsons and the like. So we are continuing that investment and batteries to replace batteries for some of that equipment. If there's nothing for fire marshal, we'll go to the fire department. So this is the town's contribution towards the fire department in keeping the expenses we carry for the volunteer service that's provided. Salary line item is for the administrative clerk that the department has to provide them with administrative support and backup. And then how they spend their money has been broken out. There's only a $5,000 increase year over year, and you can see how dollars have moved between different buckets. So utility expense is up, as I think everyone kind of acknowledges now. Repairs and maintenance is also up as we do mandatory testing and maintenance of our fire apparatus to keep them in good working order. General supplies is just that. There's some postage expense built into that also under other. This is sort of a catch-all, so you've got cameras get paid for. There's insurance programs that are paid for out of that. There's physicals that we're performing on the volunteers or reimbursing their out-of-pockets for making sure that they are fit to a level that the volunteer department is looking for. And it's a good standard to follow for risk management as well as investing in our volunteers. If there's no question on the fire department. Next up would be economic development. So there's an increase here under the line item for part-time. We put in the budget in the past, a part-timer with the intent that this individual would do something focused on economic development. It did not get filled based on where the commission was stating what it was going to be used, which was in contradiction of job description that had been approved and why the intent of putting it in the budget was put in in the first place. The process they've gone through, that Tom has sat in on some of, has them now more focused. There's an understanding of what they should be doing that supports real economic development and keeping them focused on supporting the business community. So now would be the time to start looking to fill that position. I did take it up under the assumption that we might have to pay a little bit more to get somebody that has the skill set necessary to do the business visitation and collect the information that the EDC is going to need to be able to articulate programs and other things that we need for our economic development ecosystem. It's something that we could probably talk about, whether that's too much, whether they could take a short haircut to it, but...
How many hours a week is that, assuming the $15,600 would be?
It's a part-time job, so it's roughly eight hours a week.
Eight hours, okay. It's not much.
So not a lot of hours. So I was looking at, we might have to pay more on an hourly basis and/or put a little bit more time into it. So that's a number we could talk about where that could go or should go. And then general supplies assumed that that individual was going to need something for supplies for what either they're doing or if we were going to do some sort of program to help local businesses or host an event with commercial real estate agents to call attention to the marketplace of what Clinton has on the market for commercial real estate to help put our assets on radar screen. Again, these expenses weren't incurred in the past because the EDC was not focused on where it needed to be. It seems as if they're focused on that now, so I'm a little bit more confident that those expenses could be paid. If there's no questions on EDC, next up is elections and meetings, which is the registrar of voters. So your expense line item under part-time wages, so there's, part-time wages is the registrars themselves. There is a wage increase requested from them, so that dollar amount shows that there's an increase there for their expense. You'll see that there's a disconnect between what they had requested for part-time wages for election workers versus what's recommended. A lot of this is tied to the unknown of what early voting was going to look like. It's not clear what it's going to be. The timeframe for early voting is a moving target for how many days that's going to be. What it's going to look like, whose responsibility it's going to be, is another question as to whether it would be a registrar of voters function or whether it would be a town clerk function. There's debate in Hartford as to whether or not that's going to be paid for by the states or whether it would have to be picked up by the municipality. So there's a lot of, we don't know what that's going to look like. And based on what I had heard most recently this week, there's a question as to whether it's even going to be an expense that could be incurred during this particular fiscal year. It doesn't seem as if it's lined up for the next municipal, that we've got a program clear, since it's still being debated now. It's not expected that they would roll it out with a presidential, which would be next fiscal year. So it may be two years out before early voting is a thing. So there's a lot of unknown. So I, in consultation with the registrars, pulled those expenses out. If it's something that flushes out as an expense that we have to carry in the fiscal year under discussion here, that was part of the calculus that I put into figuring out contingency. If it doesn't come to pass, we don't pay for it. So if you don't have that expense, then what's left is a budget that's more reflective of what we would be spending traditionally for how we've run elections up to this point. So that's service contracts, which is associated with what has to be done for the voting machines themselves, their programming. General supplies is what costs are associated with running the election. Other supplies is election day expenses for staff and the like. Dues and fees are what we pay for ROVAC, which is their organization, as well as training. So there is some requirement there under state statute of what we have to carry as an expense. And then postage expense is doing the annual canvas to make sure we don't have inactive voters on the voter rolls so that nobody can claim voter fraud in Clinton, which is why it's not really a problem in Connecticut, but probably less problem elsewhere. If there's no questions on registrars? We have both of them here. So next up would be civil preparedness. This is our expense associated with emergency management. So we have the stipend that is paid to the EMS director as well as a stipend for what would be a deputy. We did take that up last year in recognition of increased activity from Mike with the high volume of incidents that we've been having. So it continues to keep it up at that higher level. Additional expense for training and other general supplies, so there's always an ongoing training component to being emergency management director. The supplies are for things that we would be using for our own emergency response outside of COVID stuff. So the traditional things we would anticipate, not a pandemic. If there's no questions for emergency management, that takes us up to our last budget for the evening, the library. So this is our contribution towards the library's operating expense. Library generates some of its own money as well as what the town puts in. And then there is a reserve that is also dipped into to provide additional revenue to support programs and collection at the library. So of the $836,000, largest component of that is associated with salaries for their staff. It does assume a wage increase for those individuals. There is a bump there, which is not reflected in our operating budgets. Then you have the, other expenses are associated with the materials. It is a library. There are things that are in circulation, but that material expense has been going down over time as people have transitioned from physical paper towards technology. Utility expense in there, so utilities are going up. That's an additional driver. There's a bucket for building maintenance. Public Works does not budget for their building maintenance, so they have to budget for their own building maintenance. There's automation, which is their IT expense for their collection software and the like. That sort of rounds out the majority of the rest of their expense.
Does anybody have any questions besides me? Any question? Carl, I would really like to see a breakdown of their requests. In the past, we used to see the detailed lines that they would ask where they were allocating so much money for books, for material, I mean, other materials such as CDs, DVDs, whatever it is. It was a real breakdown of what their expenses were. And last year, I mean, I would just like to see that level of detail, if we may, as far as this goes.
I gave a sheet last year, and I will give you a sheet again this year.
Okay. And Public Works does not budget for library maintenance. That's part of their budget?
They're carrying internal costs. The capital plan would carry external costs. So those have been called out in the capital plan under the library separately from Public Works. So paving the parking lot was a library expense last year.
All right.
Carl, let me ask you. When you subsidize outside entities like the fire department, like the library, and some of these other county services, you always ask for their financial statement. Are we not doing that anymore?
You got the audit, you got the audit from the fire department.
I mean, the fire department.
About two months ago.
I don't have an audit from the library.
About two months ago.
I did give one.
Huh? Where'd it come in?
It was emailed to everybody?
It was on our, it was on the website, the Outlook thing.
Oh, okay.
The fire department?
Yes, the fire.
Yes.
It would be interesting to see something from the library because that is a, the library budget equals the fire department almost times three. So it would be nice to know how that money, you know, is used.
I was always more skeptical about these statewide agencies that talk about how successful they are, and then they want more money from us. And I've always said, can I get some of that money?
A lot of that stuff was cut out of the budget, so we are not providing subsidy to outside agencies. All that we're paying for are things that we are required to, like the probate court, CRAD, who is our mental district council of government. So a lot of that other stuff has been stripped out of the budget over time.
May I ask Mary Beth a question? Mary Beth, how much do you receive from the trust, your trust every year?
Well, it's interesting you should ask that question because since I presented my budget and my board had voted on it, the Essex Savings Bank, the loaner trust, has come back and said that they are cutting us another, or an additional, they're cutting us $9,500 going forward this year based on the Goddard of our...
Okay. So what does that give you? What does that leave you with?
So it'll be $45,000.
Forty-five?
Yeah.
Okay. And when Carl mentioned that you have other, you know, some other income, I presume that's from?
The state grant.
Okay.
About $10,000. We invited $54,000 from our loan trust.
Say that again.
We invited $54,000 from the trust. They have come back and said now we need $4,000.
Okay, all right. Anybody else? Any questions? Thank you.
That's it?
That's it. Any general questions? Any specific, any questions?
So right now, we are purchasing the dispatch console, so that's sort of the initial piece. The radios. We might be close with this budget on the radios. And then some of the other communication phases of those projects will still have to be budgeted over time. And then that doesn't include whether any grant opportunities come along that are appropriate. But that's capital, and capital is on the agenda for the 28th. So that's Tuesday next week, where we'll do WPCC, PerkinRec, some of the smaller departments, and...
Senior services.
Senior services is scheduled.
Where would Reval fall under?
Reval would be under capital.
Okay.
And then a week from today would be the Board of Education. And then a week from today would be the Board of Education, just them.
Next week, we're every night. We're every day next week.
That's why they pay us the big bucks.
That's where I get the big bucks, yeah.
Yeah, all right, well, if nobody has any questions, then I guess our meeting is over at 7:09.
Thank you, Carl.
Thank you, Carl.